You can see in the chat and also on the QR code that the slides that we'll go through are available today. I think you can start whenever you're ready, Chairman Mundo.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Today is Wednesday, May 22, 2024. Thank you for joining our virtual town hall meeting. My name is Eduardo Mundo. I am the Chair of the Probation Oversight Commission. The purpose of today's meeting is to continue our discussion related to the county's approach to juvenile detention. Detention. Join me today is my colleague Commissioner Diane Terry and the Honorable Judge Catherine Lucero, Director of California's Office of Youth and Community Restoration. POC Director Wendy Julian is also here with us to share some ground rules for participants. We will then proceed with a discussion with our panelists and conclude with comments and questions from the public. Wendy, please explain how people can participate in today's virtual town hall meeting.
Thank you, Chairman Mundo, and welcome everyone. We are broadcasting live here on Webex and also on our YouTube channel. We will not be engaging, however, with YouTube, so you're welcome to listen in there. But if you want to make a comment or ask a question, please join us on the Webex. You can see how to do that if you log on to our website at www.poc.lacounty.gov under Meetings and Town Halls. Today's town hall is not governed by the Brown Act. We don't have a quorum of POC commissioners here in their roles, and we won't be taking any action today. But we do really encourage your participation. We'll leave plenty of times for questions and comments. You also are welcome to send us an email if you don't want to comment on the live broadcast. It's info@poc.lacounty.gov. And because this is a town hall, we have an opportunity for public comment to be more engaging in the sense that if you have a question or would like for the panelists to answer something, they will have the opportunity to do so. And also, we just really want to hear what you say. We may limit each comment to two minutes, depending on how many people are logged on, but we're not going to do the strict timer. I may just let you know kindly if you have spoken for long enough that it's impacting others' ability to speak. If you are here on Webex in order to indicate that you want to give public comment, just use the little raise your hand function. It's a tiny picture of a hand at the bottom of the screen. If you're calling in, you dial star six on your phone, and that puts you in the queue and we'll call on you. Again, Jen is going to put in the chat, but you can send an email to info@poc.lacounty.gov, and we will forward your questions to the panelists if we get them in time. Buenas tardes, bienvenidos. Se ha iniciado ya la conferencia por Webex y también YouTube. Si quiere participar tiene que registrarse vía Webex. Así quiere hacer una pregunta o hacer un comentario público, por favor haga clic en la imagen de la mano y le llamaremos cuando sea su turno. Si está escuchando por teléfono, quiere hacer una pregunta, presiona estrella tres y alguien le ayudará cuando sea su turno. Si necesita traducción, yo se lo puedo probar, o usted puede probar su propio traductor. When I just said that in Spanish, I realized I gave the instructions wrong in English. If you want to put your name on the queue to give public comment, you're on the phone, you have to dial star three. Star six is to unmute yourself. We ask when you're giving public comment, you abide by some communication guidelines. Please introduce yourself. Please share your thoughts and be respectful of time so everybody can speak. Please remain respectful and honor equity and participation. We ask that you practice grace and openness with each other and use I statements to speak your own truth. We're going to get started. Again, we are recording, and the recording will be available later on our website as well as, as always, on our YouTube page. With that, I will turn it over to you, Chairman Mundo. Here, I think you're still on mute, Eduardo.
Sorry.
There we go.
To kick off our conversation, allow me to provide a brief recap of Part One of our discussion regarding detention and highlight critical passages found in the Welfare Institution Code that provides the foundation for juvenile detention. If you joined us during Part One, you know that our panel included perspectives from the probation department, the Public Defender's Office, and the district attorneys. We also had a law expert in juvenile detention joining us, and our discussion was robust and very, very meaningful. So we thought that the component missing was the judge, a bench officer. So hence, we invited the Honorable Catherine Lucero. The purpose to have this discussion was to educate everybody about the system and to provide insight that usually isn't found in the media or anywhere. And so we thought by having this discussion, we can provide a base for it, and hopefully this discussion can continue in the other areas of the space. And so hopefully this will add to that. I'm going to go and quickly review some of the slides that were presented during the first session. So Isma, if you would please start with the detention sequence. Okay, I see that everybody has it. So when a youth is arrested by law enforcement, they're able at that point to determine whether or not they're going to release that youth, cite that youth, or transport that youth for detention. Other than the mandatory detentions, which are the more sophisticated and more dangerous crimes, the law enforcement has an opportunity to make different decisions. If they decide to take the youth to probation, they will contact probation, provide details, and get clearance. In LA County, probation does not have the right... Well, it doesn't have the practice to say no. So if there is an agency that wants to bring a juvenile in that's not a mandatory detention, they are able to. Once they get to probation, an investigation is completed. It's a short intake investigation. If the youth qualifies for release because the probation department does not find any underlying issue that is concerning, and it's not a mandatory detention, probation more than likely will release the youth back to their family, and the case will proceed through the non-detained process. If probation finds that they have to detain the youth and present the youth before the judge within 48 to 78 hours, then the report will be completed, sent to the court for decision to be made. At that point, if the youth remains detained, it is ordered, and the following slide will kind of share some of the reasons for continued detention. Some cases, probation will recommend release on a case that's a mandatory detention or recommend that the youth be detained at home under a community detention program. Once the detention hearing is heard, there's always an option for the public defender to request a William H. hearing. In this hearing, the detention decision is challenged. And again, it really is at the hands of the people on the court and no longer in the hands of probation. If the youth is detained, they basically go through the detention pattern, which usually requires them being in court every 15 days unless the court or the public defender or the youth waives their time. So that in a nutshell is just the stages of detention. Next slide, please. So I'm going to skip this one for now. Let's go to the third slide. So mandatory detentions fall under 625.3, which basically says that if you're 14 years of age or older and you're taken into custody for an offense that required a firearm or one that is listed under 707B, probation does not have the authority to release you. Next slide. This is the one that I really like people to think about. "In order of judging a minor to be awarded to juvenile court shall not be deemed a conviction of a crime for any purpose, nor shall a proceeding in the juvenile court be deemed a criminal proceeding." This is the one that most people are not really aware of, but it really is the underpinnings of the juvenile court process. Next slide. So I won't read the full text of this, but the most important line here from my perspective is, "If removal of a minor is determined by the juvenile court to be necessary, reunification of the minor with her family shall be of primary objective." Next slide. "Minors under the jurisdiction of the juvenile court as a consequence of delictor conduct shall, in conformity with the interests of the public, safety and protection, receive care, treatment, and guidance that is consistent with their best interest, that holds them accountable for their behavior, and that is appropriate for their circumstances." Let's go back to the findings. So on this one, this is the purpose for today's meeting. These are... This is a typical finding of a court at the detention point. I've highlighted three points that I hope will frame our discussion today. The first one is continuance in the home is contrary to the minor's welfare. "Reasonable efforts have been made to prevent or eliminate the need for removal. There are no available services that would prevent the need for further detention." I hope today we learn how this occurs within 72 hours of an arrest. This is really a heavy finding, and it really sticks with the youth if the youth is detained. So that's it with the slides. I would now like to invite the Honorable Judge Catherine Lucero to introduce herself, speak about her experience as a juvenile judge. And once she is done, we're hoping that she will take questions and elaborate on some of the slides that we have presented today. Judge Lucero?
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioner Terry and Wendy for asking me to participate in this conversation. Prior to the role that I am in now, which is the Director of the Office of Youth and Community Restoration, a statewide office in the Health and Human Services Division of California, I was a Superior Court Judge in Santa Clara County, and I sat for over two decades in that county and specialized in court settings that served families in crisis: Family Court, Child Welfare or Dependency Court, and the Juvenile Justice Court. My leadership has always focused on bringing all stakeholders together in the child welfare and the juvenile justice systems to create solutions for the issues that we saw percolating in the community and in the courtroom. I started the Family Treatment Court, the Juvenile Justice Court for the Individualized Treatment of Adolescents, and the Family Wellness Court. It is critical that government systems work together to problem solve for families: Mental Health, Substance Use Disorder Specialists, County Offices of Education, Probation, Social Services, First Five Commissions, DA's, defenders, and other government partners, particular to your jurisdiction. Many of our families are in several systems at once and are known to our government systems at different points of entry. Foster kids and families are often the same youth in families that come to the attention of our law enforcement partners, coming from the same neighborhoods, the same zip codes. An abundance of research also tells us that detention is harmful. So even before the case gets to a judge, there should be layers of programming to prevent the youth from coming to the courtroom. Detention is actually a risk factor for future recidivism. You're more apt to drop out of school. You will have less opportunity for future employment, worse mental health outcomes, and could escalate youth into future law enforcement involvement. So I gave you a little bit of an overview of my career as a judge, and if you have any particular areas you want me to dive deeper into, I will, or I'm prepared to take some of your questions. Eduardo, did you want to...
Sorry. Yeah, sorry. I was trying to unmute. I do have a question. Thank you for that introduction, and thank you for bringing to light the recidivism number and the likelihood of issues once you're detained. What I've been fascinated with and my colleagues that I have spoken with is really digging into that whole idea that within a 48-hour period and the first hearing, those findings are made. I'm kind of curious as to the dynamics of that. You get the probation report, then you have the district attorney and the public defender there. What does that conversation usually look like?
So, you know, obviously, you keep referring to this 48 to 72-hour timeframe. That is in place to assure that nobody has a loss of freedom for longer than that period of time without some checks and balances. So that is a good thing, that a judge has to see anybody who's brought into custody within that period of time. It is swift. That is a swift turnaround. So how do I make the findings? What do I consider? Let me go ahead and, you know, just kind of talk about that for a moment. So there's a... In my county, and I think in all counties, there's what's called a risk assessment for that front door. Ours was called a risk assessment index. So the probation voice at that time in the probation detention report is a very powerful tool for the court and is very respected by the court. So I think it's important first to note that the probation role is significant. And in the best-case scenario, the judge is looking at probation, in some cases, I know it wasn't mine, to be the voice of reason because you have a DA and then you have a defender. So we're looking at where's that developmental approach? Where's that public safety approach without taking a side? I found it very helpful to ensure that that risk assessment that was done at the front door was attached to my detention reports. So I and every other judge knew what the front door assessment was. And frankly, it was... It would be common for the family to see that risk assessment and say, "Oh, actually, my son didn't have a prior felony," or "my son is in school." So there could be a mistake. So it was really important for transparency that the judge and everybody in the courtroom got to see that front-end risk assessment index. That's what we called it. I think in your county, it's called Array, but in ours, it was called RAI. In those risk assessments, there's actually a schedule, and it's if you score one to five, it's a release; five to 10, it's a supervised release; and 10 plus is a detain. So it wouldn't be uncommon for youth to be held on what was called a probation override. So they might have scored a four, but they also had something else going on, like a warrant or something else where the internal policies of probation wanted the judge to see the case before they made that independent decision. So I looked at the risk assessment. I also would look at what else had already been tried because, as I indicated, there should have been front-loaded prevention services to that youth, hopefully prior to that youth coming into that front door. So what services had already been tried? And if none had been tried, well, that's something too, right? So then maybe we should try. Was there a parent available for supervision or grandparent? Could we achieve what we needed to achieve by having a supervised release? Maybe an electronic monitoring or a home check-in or an office check-in? The two reasons that the law required me to look at for detention was public safety, safety to the youth, which we can talk about later, or, you know, to ensure that the youth would come to other hearings, flight risk. So as a judge, I had to make sure that all necessary precautions had been taken at that detention hearing to divert, but I also had to look at these other factors. So that was the thinking. So if I had a parent and I had a detained recommendation, but I had a parent show up and say, "You know what? I'm going to take work off for the next several months because my kid needs me. I will ensure that they come. I will ensure that they're on electronic monitoring. I will take him to school." You know, these are things that start to mitigate the need for a detention. But this is a process. This is a discussion. We should also remember that low-risk youth, again, we should do everything we can to get them out because they will be more harmed than not. And so one of the overrides that we experienced a lot of in Santa Clara County was failures to appear. So how I dealt with that was we ended up having a discretionary warrant system put into place that allowed the probation officer to release the youth back home with a promise to appear if it was discovered that the failure to appear was for a good reason. I don't know. These kids are dependent on their parents usually to get them to court. So if a parent has forgotten the court date or the person responsible for driving the youth to the court date wasn't available, it's important to find out these details. And so the discretionary warrant system allowed for that. It was not uncommon for me to call the school if the youth was not in court. And I'll have to tell you, sometimes they were sitting right in their chair at school. So I did not issue a failure to appear. I asked the probation department to please get the youth a promise to appear, or I asked the defense attorney, "Will you tell your client that they have to come on X day at X time so that we can hold their hearing rather than issue a warrant today?" And they would agree. So I'm just letting you know that there's a lot that can be done in that hearing, even though it's a quick turnaround. If you know the right questions and you're willing to work together, there's a lot that can be resolved.
Wow, that's a lot to unpack. As I process, I'm going to defer to Commissioner Terry for her questions.
Thank you. This is so helpful, the information that you're sharing. I think something that stood out from the last town hall was the idea, what the law says around, you know, continuance in the home if it's found contrary to the minor's welfare, you know, and then that there's no available services that could prevent the need for further detention. And it seems like, if you could share a little bit more about how that determination is made because it seems like that would be a point where some kids could go home. Yeah, if you could share more about that.
So with regard to contrary to the youth's welfare, to return home, I think that that's really packaged up with a lot of other considerations. I was also a dependency court judge, you have to remember. So to me, that was kind of a fitness, that kind of blended with a fitness issue. But I think in the JJ scope, it blended with the ability to make sure that the youth was where they needed to be in order to continue to adjudicate the case without having the youth reoffend. So what I would look at is whether or not there was a parent available to supervise the youth. If there was a parent available, then that usually for me meant that that youth could be safely returned to the home with an adult in charge versus an adult not being in charge. If I have kids that are out at 2:00 in the morning, you know, doing activities that end up being violations of the law, I'm going to be less certain that the parent is available in a way that promotes that youth staying out of trouble. If I have a youth who has been living maybe on their own, even though they're under 18, there might be other things going on in the home that we need to explore. With regard to programs and services, I did want to mention that juvenile court judges are charged under the California Rules of Court Standard 5.40 with really leading programs and services and the development of programs and services. So this is a unique role of juvenile court judges, and I took it as my personal responsibility to know what was available in the community and to do a gap assessments or to stumble upon a gap assessment and then fill the gap and develop programs and protocols. Now, my county is only 2 million. You guys are much larger, five times, six times larger. But I knew, I got off the bench, as your judges do, because I know they do, and I went into the community to see what programs could be and services could be developed so we could get kids out of custody. I worked with stakeholder partners for high-touch release programs, especially with the girls and gender expansive youth populations. I know that your D Y D is doing a lot of police diversion work, and that program development is really important. So I don't know if I answered your question exactly, but I think that the combination of making sure that there's a parent or guardian that is available, especially during this really high-time crisis under a lot of pressure because of an event, combined with the program and services, is really the key assessment that the judge is making.
And just as a follow-up to that, if there's an instance where, you know, for child welfare-involved youth, or even if it's a situation where parents, you know, because of work schedules, for example, can't take off, or if there's not a parent there, how is... You know, can you share any examples of maybe how you worked with the social worker or any of those other systems to try to, you know, kind of advocate for that youth to stay home or be released?
Well, if it was a foster child who ended up in my court, who had not been with their family of origin for a while, we generally had a dual-status court, and I know that you all have that as well. So that would take a little bit more of a nuanced team approach because I did have cases where the youth got into trouble because they were running home. But if that parent wasn't parenting that youth, we had to go through other steps to make sure perhaps that we got further reunification services, that somebody checked out the current situation, and I really advocated for that. I didn't settle for, "Well, they haven't lived with them for five years." What I promoted was, "Well, let's see what it's like now because that youth was taken at five, and now they're 15." And if mom had a drug problem at five, that's going to be a different impact on the youth when they're 15. So I'm not trying to say that I think I wanted to just sweep everything away, but I wanted to make sure, were we being responsive to the current needs of that family? Now, when parents just were too busy, because that's how it is. I mean, I'm in Silicon Valley, and it's expensive. Parents did work around the clock, you know, graveyard, swing, daytime. But if we could get family, other family, uncles, aunts, grandmothers, grandparents, friends of the youth, you know, it's really a time where you start pulling people in, almost like a family-child team meeting. And I know that your county is doing some of that. I've heard Deputy Chief Epps at some of the probation oversight committee hearings talking about some of these collaborative solutions. But you can't rest. It's something that has to be done over and over again for every different situation. But I think it's important to take the time and to develop as many team members on that early decision as possible, very much almost like a dependency case.
Thank you.
If there were gaps, maybe in the initial report for some reason, perhaps you couldn't get a contact of a parent, or maybe there just wasn't a real comfort level to release the kid at the time, was there a trigger for reassessment if the youth was continued detained?
So if I didn't have enough information, I would delay it for one day before making all those permanent findings, have the, the parties back in court the next day to give me very specific information that I needed or to bring in a parent or a teacher or something else. And if it took more than one day, I could always have a redetention hearing in a few days, or I could just set the juror, I could expedite the jurist's hearing. Once a decision is made and, and, and if more information is needed or if all agree, then condition, and conditions were met, then we, or were, or were not met. I mean, you can revisit it at any time. I mean, every, every case is going to be different and every effort should be made to tailor the timeline to the youth's needs. Sometimes a parent can come from out of town and will be available in three days, but is not here now. Sometimes parents can take time off work to supervise the youth, but they need time to talk to their employers. They need a few days to get their, their stuff together. And sometimes the parent already even had the kid lined up for, let's say, a substance abuse treatment program, but it's not available for a few days. I've, you know, even had parents who were signing their kids up for special schools or to go live with their grandmother in Oregon, or, you know, the, the family was working on things. So I, I just think it's important to see what you have and not just automatically put everything over for two weeks because that's the practice.
Commissioner Terry.
Yeah, I think I had another question. You know, where it's talking about, and let me pull it up again. The language mandating that minors should receive the care, treatment and guidance that's in their best interest. And, and I'm just wondering if a institution, if there's a, a facility that can't provide that. So for example, we know that in LA County, there's just a challenge right now with getting consistent programming. If, if an institution can't provide that, is that another opportunity to maybe divert a, a child home and maybe use some of the community-based resources? I'm, I'm just wondering how you would kind of navigate some of those decisions because we're, you know, saying that the child should be in this facility and get this treatment. But if the treatment isn't, isn't available, how does that factor into the long-term decision for the youth?
Are you talking still about a detention hearing?
Yeah. And I'm sorry if I, if I jumped. I'm, I'm kind of looking at some of the white codes that Chair Mundo shared when we started, yeah.
Well, I mean, I think it's very important to even, you know, as, as a, a judge and to work with the stakeholder partners to make sure that there are programs and treatment opportunities available. I know that in my county, they were. I felt comfortable that they were. I visited our facility often and worked with our probation team and our behavioral health team and our county office of education. So I, I think that every, that decision is going to be, you know, up to the court and then balancing it with the public safety need and balancing it with perhaps at that point, there is a lack of information and there has to be that balance. I think if there's a court, a, a judge that honestly believes that there's no, that that youth, you know, won't have what they need in a institution. I mean, I've ordered probation to take the youth, the location, say, a therapeutic appointment to a medical appointment. So the court has a lot of bandwidth and authority to make sure that youth gets what they need if it's not available in the facility itself.
Follow-up, Commissioner.
I think, again, thinking of our, our last meeting, you know, what does it look like to work with parents in that space? I know that it had come up in, in some of the discussion last time where, you know, everyone has their attorney at the hearing and, and I know sometimes parents expressing that they didn't feel that they could advocate for their child. And so I'm just wondering, you know, what that looked like in, in your experience.
You know, the court really has to trust the defenders because the defender is advocating for their client's best interest. And in my court, we made sure the parent got a report, a copy of the report. I don't know if that's happening in the LA system. Eduardo, is it?
What was that? I missed a question.
The parents get a copy of the detention report?
I don't think so, but I, I, I don't think they do. But it might be shared by the public defender if the parent is kind of responsive in a positive way.
Okay, so Commissioner Terry, back to my point. I think, I think there has to be a, a trust that the defender is working, you know, with the, the wishes of their client because there's a lot of backstory when that youth shows up to us. And we don't want to make it worse by making assumptions that whatever the parent is going to advocate for is actually going to be what the youth needs. And I did see the opposite happen. I saw parents doing really great work for their youth and, and support, but I, I saw the opposite as well. I, I, I had, one of our biggest challenges, for example, with ending the incarceration of girls and gender expansive youth was that the inability to go home because their parent would not allow them back home. And I was often asked to please keep them incarcerated. So and even if the youth had a good place to be, I was often asked by the parent not to put, you know, not to send that youth to that place. So I think it's really, again, back to balancing and nuance and details. I don't think we can have a, a single answer for, you know, the perfect situation in every case.
You know, I have a two-part question that is related. Consistency in your county among the courts and judges and in your new capacity, consistency among different counties. Did you see a high level of consistency or was it kind of, depending where you went to court, there was a different outcome?
Well, again, LA is very big. You have a lot of different judges. We had three juvenile justice court judges and at the time, three dependency judges. And I handled the dual status calendar, so the crossover kids. We, I, I attempted to lead as the presiding judge of the juvenile division and the presiding judge of the juvenile justice court. I attempted to lead in a way that provided data and research and science to my colleagues. We, I attempted to lead in a way that provided training and bench cards. I was a member of the National Council of Juvenile and Family Court Judges. I was on their board. So I was connected to a, 2,000 other judges across the nation who were dealing with similar issues and problem solving in different ways. So I tried to give my colleagues as many tools as possible. But when, when the case is in front of you and you are the one where the buck stops, you're going to make the decision that you think in the moment is best for both the youth, the family and the community. And so were there inconsistencies? Yes. Did I provide my best thinking when asked? Yes, but I think that that's the nature of, of the court system is that we're all humans. We're all appointed or elected and we have to be the ones with our thought process and our life experience to, to make those calls. And the best, I thought the best thing I could do and the best thing that was done for me when I was a new judge was I went to conferences, training, learned about adolescent development, learned about racism, structural racism, and then apply my best thinking to in the moment.
Commissioner Terry.
Nothing at, at this time. Kind of reviewing some of my thoughts and notes, so yeah.
Yeah, this is, this is heavy material you're providing. Judges Sarah, it's, it's really, that's why I was caught off guard a minute ago. I was caught in trying to process. But so this is one thing that I've always struggled with. The, 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 not just the optics of of a very serious offense, but the reaction to it. There are, there are youth that are arrested on very serious offenses that were really situational, more than sophisticated in planning. You know, or there were accomplices kind of pulled into it. How, how did you deal with that? Let's say you had a, a, a youth that checked all the boxes off for release, but that offense was a serious offense. And an adult, there, there would have been a chance and an opportunity on many cases for bail, but juvenile doesn't have that. How did you balance that?
Well, if they check all the boxes for release, I, I'm hoping I released. I mean, I, I feel like when you say the word balance, that means there was something to think about. Are, are you talking about a youth who I thought would be safe in the community, but their offense was so egregious that I felt maybe pressure to hold the youth in custody even if they could be released?
Yes.
Well, I think, as I said, it, I, I tried to do a lot of collaborative decision-making, getting, getting folks to the table wherever possible, coming up with safety plans and making sure that if, if, if there was a situation where it was a, a case where maybe there were multiple multiple kids involved, maybe the, the charge was serious, but the participation of the youth wasn't serious. That's a nuance that can be looked at. I think I would try to build a, a way to get the youth home with lots of oversight. But those are very, those are very tough decisions because especially when you have the, you know, the possibility of you know, let's just say it's a homicide case, but you know that the youth was only sitting in the front car, in the front of the car and it wasn't, had, didn't have the serious intent or participation. And it, it would depend on the age. It would depend on whether or not that youth was involved, still involved in school, going to school. I think I would have to look at all kinds of different risk factors. Have I made those tough decisions? Yes, I have. Have I had the parents of the kids who were harmed and sometimes killed in my courtroom asking me to please keep these youth in custody? Yes, I have. These are very difficult decisions. And something I need to stress is that when the case gets to the judge, it's just, there's a lot there. It's, it's not generally, it's, it's really not generally a, a case that is simple to to, to just decide. I, I guess that's what I'm saying. I mean, it's, 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 it's very layered and you know that from your experience in probation. I don't know if I really answered the question and if you want to get me more focused, you're welcome to try.
Well, so I, I purposely designed this town hall to be systemic and, but I, I do want to bring up two things that are kind of individual to LA County. One is well, it's probably county-wide, statewide now. So recently you had a change in the law which requires probation to notify the public defender's office before an intake report is completed or even started because you have to interview the kid. And that's led to a lot of do not interview the kid. So with that in mind, now you have a report, because in LA County, the assessment report, the LADS, isn't presented to the court. So now you have a report that all the categories that talk about the kids, schooling, home environment are empty. So how, how does a judge in any county having to face that overcome that challenge?
I mean, there, there's nothing to work with there. You know, there's, there's no, an ability to make an assessment on that request to release a youth who who may be there on a very, not giving any information. I, I, I don't, I, I think the, there's just such a balance with, with our, our juvenile justice system on wanting to protect the youth, but also wanting to, on the other side of that, needing to have information because part of protecting them means getting them home as quickly as possible. So if you don't have facts for that decision, it's, that would be very difficult to make. And I have not been on the bench in two years and I suspect this law came into play in that time. But I know when we had our, you know, our tram, when we used to have our transfer cases, transfer to adult and the youth would not be interviewed for those transfer hearing reports. I, I felt that was a huge disadvantage to me to understand what happened so that I could make a decision about whether or not the youth should go to adult court. And so I'm just, I'm, I know it's not the same gravity, but I'm just letting you know that the lack of information also isn't helpful. So I wish there could be a middle ground. I wish that the, maybe the defender could, could be with the youth when they answer the questions about school or family relationships, hobbies, because that matters, you know? Positive youth justice requires us to look at the youth as a whole person, not as a, as a, as a crime allegation. And it would be very difficult to do that without information.
Commissioner Terry.
Yeah, I had a question and I'm not sure if you'll have any thoughts, but you know, something that we've been looking at in the PLC is really looking at, at racial disparities, you know, as it relates to youth in the system. And I'm just curious to know if in your county, you knew of any initiatives or kind of strategies that were used to kind of reduce racial disparities? Because it seems like there's so many different points where bias, you know, can enter. And I'm, I'm just curious to know if, if you came across any kind of helpful strategies for that.
So we did have a really great police diversion program with Overfelt High School where the chief of police issued a no arrest policy for kids on campus at Overfelt High School. And they were instead sent to either substance abuse counseling or mental health counseling on campus. And that, that dropped arrests of black kids and Latino kids like 35% in that year. We also, with our deferred entry of judgments, discovered through our data, which is really important to have data, that our, our, our black kids were not succeeding on the deferred entry of judgment contracts, which is a one-year contract for a, a non-violent felony. You can enter into a, a, a one-year contract with the court. And they were failing miserably. So we provided a mentor and a DEJ contract and we had 100% compliance that year. 100% success. So we, we were able to begin to start identifying where our disparities were really glaring and address them in that way. And there's, there are counties that are doing really good work around race disparity analysis. I think the smaller the population of arrested kids and incarcerated kids gets, the more disparities there are because of the smaller number and the, the the fact that that number gets even more, you know, like I think we have like 80% Latino kids incarcerated in Sa- in Santa Clara and 18% black kids when there's only 3% in the county of black kids and then only 33% Latino kids. So, so we, so we're happy our numbers are small, but now we have to look really, really targeted, in targeted ways. We have to look at programs that we can help kids be successful at. And again, once they reach the courthouse door, I would argue, it's just so late. That's so late. You know, it's great for us to try to sort that out, but I think really You know, it's great for us to try to sort that out, but I think really supporting CBO capacity building in the neighborhoods that we're seeing a lot of our kids come from is really the way to reach equity, really a way to start saying, you know, after school programs, building those up, childcare programs, building those up. And that's what we're hoping to do at CHHS with our Medi-Cal Reform, with our Prop 1, with our CalAim Justice Package, which is, I know CalAim is after the youth has been incarcerated. But I think we have just put millions of dollars toward capacity building and diversion is a huge part of making sure that youth continue to have any, you know, all possible ability to divert and have access to education, vocational training, you know, basic needs. So that's where our efforts are also going.
So we're at seven minutes to the hour, which would, unless Commissioner Terry has another question, I think that if I ask a question, it's going to require a 20-minute response. And I'm eager to hear from the attendees. So I think for now, it's probably a good time to open the floor to our attendees to raise questions and comments that they may have. So Wendy, please facilitate public comment for us.
My goodness, thank you so much, Judge Lucero. That was incredible. I've written about three pages of notes and have so many thoughts and questions about what you asked. Thank you. I see lots of you have raised your hands already. Please, I invite you to click the little raise your hand feature or dial star three on your phone. And if you're on YouTube, you need to come over to WebEx if you want to give public comment. We're going to start with call-in user number two. Your number is anonymous, so I can't help you. So you have to know who you are. We're going to unmute you and you are going to need to dial star six to unmute yourself.
Hello, can you hear me?
Okay, yes, we can.
Hi, yes, my name is Ricky Sareño. I work with Department of Mental Health. I am your family parent advocate. I am a mother previously in children with mental health issues and I work on the navigation team with full service partnership team. My question to you is, I know that you had mentioned about working on different types of commissions and ideas and so forth that, you know, the judge saying about participating and coming up with new ideas and really trying to do all that. Have we at any time had a parent who is a mother of a child who has been held and has gone through those issues on the committee with you guys?
Thank you for that question. Family engagement is really important to us and I know that in my office right now, we have a family engagement expert and his whole job is to set up a family, a family engagement advisory committee, much like our youth advisory committee. We routinely try to recruit for other commissions, federal, state, and local that send us requests to help them find a parent that's been involved in the justice system. I think that it maybe wasn't the practice before. When I say before, you know, I don't know, five years ago, but I think it is currently becoming much more important to all of us that we hear family voice.
Thank you. That's news to me. I am really glad you asked that question. And I just, the website for OICR, of which Judge Lucero is the director, is oycr.ca.gov. That's awesome. We'll go next to Romana Barajas. You're unmuted.
I work for Sycamore, which is one of the community that work with mental health. But I'm also a mom, lived, experienced with a child in juvenile house several times. And I know that this might not be answered today, but I would like for you to take it into consideration. I did hear it mentioned that some mothers or parents don't want their kids back. And that's a reality, especially with substance abuse. They're afraid because of violence against the family members of the parent. In the past, and this is me talking from personal experience, I felt safe when my son was there because at least I knew where he was. It was safe and being fit. Unfortunately, the state of California, even if we had identified a drug program, it's still voluntary and the child can deny it. And sending the child back home doesn't solve anything. He just goes back. And so there has to be a very big need that when you move forward in doing these programs, that you take into consideration mental health and substance abuse, because that is a big factor other than violent crimes. And then I would like to know how Santa Clara did it with those programs because I think it's greatly needed. Thank you.
Thank you. We do have a health policy division and my health policy chief, Dr. Juan Arguello, is a child psychiatrist who specializes in mental health and substance use disorders for youth. This is a very important topic for us, especially to weave into our California Health and Human Services agenda and all of the resources that our youth need to get on the road to success. In Santa Clara County, we had a specialized court called the Court for the Individualized Treatment of Adolescents, which the youth had to have both a mental health and a substance use identified issue. And what we, it was very successful. It was, as the name says, individual treatment. It was very individualized. Sometimes we had to see the case twice a week. I did let everybody appear remotely because I didn't want to bring the youth in twice a week, but I did want to make sure the youth was on track. So these are cases that involve a lot of thought. They're complex, but they're not impossible to assist. And we were able to assist many of our youth and get them off probation because I didn't, I didn't hold them necessarily to some sort of bar that would be impossible for them to make because of their mental health disorders. And we did a lot of harm reduction. I never expected perfection from our youth. They're adolescents. They're in development. They're humans developing. Just like I have my own teenagers and I didn't expect perfection. So I used a harm reduction model. If you want to email me or send me a note through the website, I'd be happy to talk more about it with you.
Thank you. And Judge Lucero, Janae put the website in the chat, so folks can get it that way. And Sycamore that she mentioned is one of our short-term residential therapeutic programs in the county, STRTPs. Okay, we will go next to Adrena. Thanks for being here, Adrena. We're going to unmute you. Go ahead.
My comment is on parent participation, judicial performance, and public defenders. Based on my personal experience, because I hear you discuss on the importance of parent participation, I've been placed in situations where I've been completely left in the dark by public defenders like Kristin Gazawa. Naturally, the public defenders come out and speaks with the family prior to entering the court proceedings. And in my case, she did not. So when they finally called my son in, I was left completely unaware of the sentencing that was about to occur, forcing me to raise my hand to ask a question. I did not interrupt the judge or the DA. I patiently waited to be called upon. I guess raising my hand was so offensive to Kristina Al Hill, she kicked me out of the courtroom and had the police around me armed with guns to restart the proceedings. So how does parent involvement fit here? I know what she did was wrong and instead of yelling at me, the public pretenders should be held accountable for lack of communication in doing her jobs, stating that I don't have to talk to you or tell you anything. I'm not your attorney. So I got punished for her mistakes and felt it unnecessary to surround me with six to eight men armed with guns. Someone really needs to go check in on that judge. I know that's not how court proceedings are supposed to be conducted, a complete abuse of power. Now, on the other hand, we have great judges like Commissioner Ipsen and who has a courthouse and the public defenders are coming in consulting with me. They treat us like human beings and I could raise my hand. He will let me speak. He will let me talk and he won't kick me out. And you could just tell the differences between two judges. So why does one courthouse handle proceedings differently than the other? I mean, we're all the state of California. Shouldn't it be held the same, all the same way? Because if what I did was wrong, then Commissioner Ipsen would have surrounded me with police officers holding with their guns and everything. But in that case, he didn't. He's never done that. He's treated me like human, like an actual human being. So it's very concerning to me that we have judges out here like Christina Al Hill giving bad judgments to our kids. Probation told her and their recommendation was to release my son out of custody, not to hold him in custody. And because I raised my hand, she kept him in custody. And I just think that it's confusing when you have two courthouses doing their jobs differently. So that was pretty much my comment.
Oh, great. I was gonna ask you to let Judge Lucero respond to that. Not in particular the personalities, but just the issue of it.
Yes, thank you, Adrena, for that reflection. And I am very sorry that you had to go through that. It sounds like it was a very traumatic experience. Every court has a presiding judge, one judge that's in charge of all the judges. That judge could, would read a letter if you wrote to that judge and asked that question. And so that's one avenue. I think it is possible for judges to act very, very differently in different parts of the county and different courtrooms. And that might be a good reflection for the presiding judge. I also just wanted to let you know that judges are accountable to different oversight bodies, including the Commission on Judicial Performance. Judges have to stand for election every six years. So I know I always was very knowledgeable that my seat was at the will of the people. There's the Courts of Appeal, of course, that will tell a judge if they've made the wrong decision for the wrong reasons. I just am giving you an idea of kind of who has authority over judges. And I would urge you to reach out to the presiding judge and let them know what your experience was so that it can be on the record.
Wendy, I'm going to take back six of our minutes just to kind of flesh this one out. An underpinning of that, her comments, and it's not the first time she's made this. Adrena has been very forceful in her voice, is the fact that the public defender is the attorney of the youth and not the parents. And at some level, not being somebody who's a lawyer, I understand that, but that creates a challenge for the parent. How does a parent overcome that challenge?
Well, nobody's going to really like my answers, but I know some parents hired their own lawyers or asked for a pro bono lawyer to come in and help advocate for them at the hearing. And I would allow that. It would look like, you know, hearing from the defender and the DA and the probation department. And then if there was something that the attorney for the parent wanted to say, I would allow that. I would encourage the attorneys to talk with each other. I also think if, usually there's a court officer in each of the courts, usually a probation officer. Chair Mundo, does that happen in LA? Is there a court officer?
Yes, there is. Very influential.
Yeah. And so I would, I would urge you to ask who the court officer is in the courtroom and tell the court officer to please let the judge know that you're here and would like to speak to the court. The court officer should relay that message to the judge because they're kind of the judge out in the lobby and, you know, among the clients. So that's another avenue. I think you could submit a letter to the judge, although the judge will not read it without making a copy and letting everybody read it. So you would have to be prepared to have everybody on the case read it. I would give it to the probation officer and ask that it be submitted. So there's ways for you to get the judge's attention. I know if I were the judge, I would want to hear from you that he has their opinion about whether or not it's a good or a bad thing. But I know I thought it was very important to hear from people that wanted to address me, grandmothers, uncles. This is still a youth. It's still a child in a whole family. So even if the youth, the child just says, don't talk to my grandma, you know, I usually want to talk to grandma. So that's how, and I would tell the probation officer, I really want to address the court and here's what I want to say. And will you please let the court know? Or here's the letter I'd like the court to have. So, but it will be read by all the parties and it will be available to everyone. So I would just remember that.
Thank you.
Chair Mundo, can I ask a follow-up question about the accountability of the courts?
Sure.
I read an article a couple of weeks ago about a court watcher in an adult court here in LA County that had some really interesting insight into probation's involvement in the adult court. And, you know, I had the chance to be in a lot of dependency court proceedings as a CASA, but of course, dependency and juvenile justice courts are generally closed to the public. You mentioned the elections and the advisory bodies. What do you think about the balance around court accountability and the public knowledge about what happens in the courtrooms?
Well, the issue of confidentiality in the child welfare and juvenile justice courts is to protect the youth, the child. It's not to protect the systems. So if a youth wants folks in, generally, they should be brought in because it's not to protect systems. It's to protect the child. And I do think, you know, there are, this is a very controversial idea and issue. There are some states that don't have confidential child, children's courts. They are open to the public. At one point, there was even going to be a push for jury trials in child welfare and juvenile justice. So it's a long discussed issue. What is the balance between confidentiality and public awareness? I think, again, if we look at it as a proposition that it's to protect the youth, then if the youth wants everybody in, then the courtroom, then they should be. Now, should the press be allowed in if the youth wants the press there? We have to think really globally about this because a youth may feel something one day, but then in 10 years be really mortified that they made a decision in that moment. So, yeah, so that's my, that's my reflection on whether or not they should be confidential. Or one of the areas I think the confidentiality has become a real issue that we should think about is with restitution and victims. Victims don't often know the backstory of the youth. And I think it's been helpful when they do, when they do understand the trauma. And I had one situation where there was a victim's statement and the part of the statement that was going to be read said, I bet your mother doesn't even love you. And that youth had been a foster child and didn't know their mother. And I felt that was maybe a little too much for that setting. And so I asked the DA to ask that, to disclose to the victim that fact. And that victim struck that sentence. So ordinarily, that's all confidential, but there are times where I think we really need to share information to get the right outcome.
Do we have?
We do. We have Commissioner Kokani, who has raised her hand.
We'll take her.
Welcome, Millie.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you so much for this conversation and for allowing me to ask my questions. I have a couple. The piece about open courtrooms actually really resonates. I practiced in New York where our, there it's called Family Court, but our dependency and delinquency courts were open to the public. And I can say without a doubt, And I can say, without a doubt, the way those proceedings took place were so different than proceedings take place here. The amount of accountability to families and to young people. Because I think all of us hold biases, as you said, you know, Judge Lucero. We all bring our personal experience to the courtroom, whether it's as advocates, as probation, as DCFS, as judges. And there is something to be said when you know that people are watching. Frankly, I'm a better parent when I know people are watching. And so I imagine people are also better judges, triers of fact, when people are watching. So just putting that out there in case anyone's listening, that I think it's actually really unfortunate that our courtrooms are not open to the public. My questions are slightly different, but related to the risk assessment that you use in Santa Clara. Is that, do you know if that's the same risk assessment that we use here in LA?
I don't think it is because yours is even called something different. I would venture to say it's similar, but it's not the same.
And do you know if these risk assessments are, I don't know, like, I think California is a Fry jurisdiction, I don't, or maybe Dalbert, I'm actually not sure. But do you know if these, if these risk assessments are like peer reviewed? Or if there's any sort of like scientific backing or research done connected to these research, to these risk assessments, or if that's ever like questioned by the judges?
Oh, it's questioned. Burns is a great resource to ask this question. I, my understanding from my experience is that they are not highly favorable to youth of color. There are questions like, you know, parents at home or formerly incarcerated, or, you know, there's,
Right.
or school attendance, things that some of the kids in our neighborhoods don't have, won't have a good outcome in those categories. So I know that in Santa Clara County, we worked really hard to look at reforming our risk assessment because of what we, you know, admitted to ourselves appeared to be some biases. I do not believe that there, there's any kind of statutory framework around the risk assessment, the front door. I know that this is something Annie Casey works on. Is this something my office is working on? In fact, we're about to give a series of webinars through evident change, which specializes in the JACE, the Juvenile Assessment Index. I don't know what the S stands for, maybe Eduardo does. So, so this is kind of a, I think this is a really ripe area for us to dig into.
Sounds like the next town hall.
And I'm so sorry, I just have one last question, and that's related to the reasonable efforts. In New York, we litigated reasonable efforts as defense attorneys all the time because it's tied to funding, right? Like, when you make a reasonable efforts finding, probation gets money, DCFS gets money. And so I'm just curious if, like, reasonable efforts, if you've ever seen it litigated? And if you've ever made a determination that reasonable efforts were not made?
So in the child welfare courts, of course, I saw that many times. And yes, I did make a lack of reasonable efforts findings. Now, in the, in the justice court, it's, Title 4E only kicks in if the youth becomes a foster youth. My understanding is it doesn't kick in at day one. But if you don't make the finding at day one and they later become a foster youth, then you might have some problems. I, if I thought there weren't reasonable efforts, I would probably kick it back to make sure that they were handled. Because if I thought there was something reasonable to explore, an uncle, some other way to get a youth out of incarceration, I probably would have, if I had enough, like, conviction that I was going to make a non-reasonable efforts finding, I think I would work as hard as I could to make sure all my, all the Ts were crossed and all the Is were dotted by giving folks direction on making sure that we've overturned every rock.
Yeah. Thank you for that. Those are all my questions.
So Wendy, do we have any more questions or comments?
I actually do have one comment that came through the chat. Do you mind if I read it?
No, please.
Why do you feel that assigning a mentor led to the 100% success rate in the mentioned school? Is it, you know, what, how do you, I'm going to try to paraphrase this a little bit. How do you feel about having black, the black students enter the contracts? Why the low success rate prior to the assignment of the mentor?
So I don't think we ever officially studied that to make that determination. I can hypothesize that that mentor made sure that that youth had access to complete their contract. And perhaps it was a resource issue, perhaps it was a communication issue with the probation department. They, the youth, I think, felt supported when they had their own kind of mentor acting as a champion for them in a way that perhaps they didn't feel before. But this happened. I mean, it, it happened, the 100% success rate with a mentor. We ended up expanding that to all youth. 14, and I think, oh, for every 14 and 15-year-old on DEJ because we felt it was so successful. We, it was Fresh Lifelines for Youth mentors. I don't know if you're aware of FLY, but they're an excellent program in Santa Clara County. So again, I think it just goes back to connection and it goes back to having somebody in your corner and somebody rooting for you. Because it can seem like a low-level situation because it is, it is a formative diversion, but there's very high stakes. And so hopefully, that's, that's why it made a difference.
So legislation, we kind of waded into it with the new law that requires probation notify the public defender and that the public defender be able to speak to the child before being interviewed. My question is just a basic question about legislation. And in your experience, the role it plays in altering and changing and maybe restricting or redirecting how you operate. In general, how do you feel about the role legislation, legislation plays with juvenile?
Well, that's a really big question because, you know, I was born out of legislation, SB 823. And my office was, was developed and funded. So I also am now in the administration of government. I'm not in the legislative branch, but, and no longer in the judicial branch, but in the administrative branch. So I think that this is a tool, that legislation is a tool. But I think that all things could have unintended consequences. I think there's a lot of people, a lot of eyes on the legislation that seeks to reform the juvenile justice arena, and that's a good thing. I think, I think there's some really great critical thinking going on. But it's a very nuanced area. And as you can hear just from today's discussion, it involves behavioral health, substance use disorders, education, County Office of Education. It's much, it's much more than just a law enforcement area per se. It reminds me of the same team of people that are taking care of our foster youth and our foster, and our families that end up in foster care. So I think that we just have to be really vigilant about what is being promoted and make sure that we're all very knowledgeable about potential outcomes and watching for the possibility of unintended consequences.
Thank you. Wendy, I understand we have one more comment.
Yeah, I think we have time for one more, and Erin Palacios has raised her hand. Welcome, Erin. Oh. Erin, if you can, oh, if you can put your hand back up, that would be great, and we can unmute you. There we go.
I think I did it. Did I? Can you hear me?
Yes.
I just wanted to go back to, I guess it's a little tied to the legislation since that came up. But this notion of the reasonable efforts and contrary to the welfare findings for juvenile justice-involved youth, because California is peculiar in that it has multiple agencies, but it is the same as everywhere else in that those findings for juvenile justice-involved youth and child welfare-involved youth are the same. A reasonable efforts finding and a contrary to the welfare finding has to be supported in the same way for both of those young people and for juvenile justice youth at detention. So the contrary to the welfare finding cannot be based on things that are unrelated to the child's welfare in the home, right? It has to be about their welfare in the home. It can't be supported by things like the seriousness of the crime and the, you know, typical juvenile justice safety things of the community. If it's only supported by that, it's insufficient. And there's no world in which the ultimate use of that funding or that state, federal program doesn't tie back to the original removal, which for juvenile justice youth is that detention hearing. That means extended foster care payments. It means foster care placements. It means being with your uncle on a foster care placement. So those are critical. And I agree with Commissioner Kikani that those reasonable efforts findings need to be litigated. And I just wanted to highlight that for a while, they were in Sacramento because the federal government actually audited some of the juvenile justice cases for Sacramento several years back and reminded us how that works. And the other reason I wanted to mention it is right now, there's a huge change proposed in the budget with respect to how foster care placements are funded and how the rate for a foster care placement will be arrived at. In many ways, it is a great shift in that it will tie the rate to the child rather than the placement. However, it is going to be a earthquake-level shift. And it's going to leave some people behind. One of those groups is going to be juvenile justice because I don't think most people know that's even pending in the juvenile justice world. And I'm giving a plug to everyone and encouraging you to try to take a look at that and think about how it's going to impact juvenile justice-involved youth. For instance, with emergency placement needs with a relative at the detention hearing, we're always hearing that that's difficult, that could be corrected right now. And I think understanding that funding and how it's going to impact older youth and juvenile justice youth is critical. So I just hope people take a look at that.
Erin, for us that are not that nuanced, is it possible to send Wendy some links that can kind of start us on the trail?
Yeah, my, my office is rolling that out through the Department of Social Services. We are on it. We are, thankfully, because we are involved in leadership meetings with Kim Johnson, who's the Director of DSS. We are very excited about the shift to follow the child and not the placement. And we also have a Health Division, as I mentioned, Dr. Juan Argüello. And Will Lightborn is one of our senior consultants. He previously was the Director of DSS and DHCS. So Erin, we are on this nuanced, wonderful change that is about to shake up everything. And that's our whole job. Thank you for creating us because our whole job is to get our JJ kids on all of these agendas, all of these health initiatives out of CHHS. And it's very important to us to make sure we uncover where the dollars are for our kids.
I was going to say, I'll send the link to the trailer bill language for that. I, but also, and I sometimes forget that you're all in the same agency, but then sometimes you speak and I remember. But the, the thing I want to say is juvenile justice youth were entirely left out of the, the data that was used to create the rates. There were no juvenile justice cases reviewed in that data that I know of. Now, that doesn't mean it can't be adopted to fit them, but that's the kind of oversight in the child welfare space that I think is critically harmful to juvenile justice-involved youth. They also did not yet correct the emergency placement components. They did not seem to notice that the CANS had not yet been mandated to juvenile justice youth for use in the CFT or the Child and Family Team, when that's going to be the entire basis for creating a rate now. And that is something that juvenile justice practitioners are going to need to understand because the use of the CANS and the use of the CFT pulls a lot of information into a case very, very fast. And so we are not having discussions about things like the confidentiality of records and the appropriate use of those records and who gets access to them when that happens. And all of those conversations, if that's going to pass in the budget, need to happen immediately. But there are no juvenile justice practitioners currently sitting at the meetings that are taking place, kind of workshopping that language with the department.
Can you?
But it's hard.
Erin, can you send me a note on this and I'll shoot it over to my folks that I thought were sitting on, in those committees?
I, when I say practitioners, I meant defenders and advocates. I know, I think your office is there, but I think having defenders and advocates who understand where this is going to play in the courtroom day to day and how it's going to affect their clients is going to be really important because they aren't discussing juvenile justice all that much. I have a colleague who's raised it a couple of times, and there's been crickets.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Erin. We're quickly coming to the close of our session. Commissioner Terry, any final thoughts?
I just wanted to say thank you. I think this is so informative, especially for those of us who are just trying to educate ourselves on the steps. And I think you also shed light on like what's possible through some of the work in your county. So I'm looking forward to future discussions. I was looking up the JACE a little bit, and, you know, it's actually set up to reassess youth at multiple points. So I think that's interesting. That's something that we've, we've been talking about. So, yeah, more to come, hopefully.
Thank you. So our time has come to an end. I hope all the attendees found value in our discussion. Thank you again, Commissioner Terry, and thank you, Honorable Judge Catherine Lucero. You provided more than we could have ever expected. Left me dizzy, actually. Going to have to process and watch this over. Our next commission meeting is on Thursday, June 13th, at St. Anne's Events and Conference Center at 9:00 AM. You can find registration details on the PLC website at plc.laccounty.gov/meetings. Thank you, everyone, for listening in, and have a great, great day.
Bye-bye.